...and enjoy the power of music and being able to pass that on to others.
I really think that music lifts people's spirits, gives them hope, gives them some vision, discipline. There's so many great, great things that music can do for people, to lift them up and help them, give them positive feelings.
All the musicians that come in here to perform for our guests are all doing it for free. They're not doing it for any cost or anything of that. It's all for fun and for free, and the cover charge is pretty much nothing. It's open to anyone, so if anyone's interested, they're more than welcome to come by.
Midnight Mission is really doing wonderful things for the people here, and always a pleasure to play.
So have you checked out the Sherman Oaks Castle Park lately? What's your favorite part? The arcade? The pizza? The miniature golf? Wait, what? Okay, you're just like me, you've never heard of Sherman Oaks Castle Park. Well, Saeda Pagan is here to tell you all about it.
Welcome to Sherman Oaks Castle Park. It's a place where you can play 18 holes of miniature golf, get in some serious batting practice, and relax with your favorite arcade games.
If you want to come here Friday, you know, after picking up the kids from school, or spending a Saturday, Sunday afternoon, or even in the evening for, you know, some of the younger adults that want to have date night, you know, they can do that here.
This delightful venue is located in the heart of the San Fernando Valley. It is operated by the Los Angeles Recreation and Parks Department with support from private vendors.
I like it. I like all the new stuff. Every time I come in, something's always updated. It's pretty cool.
The castle park's main attraction is miniature golf. There are three amazing courses with resurfacing currently going on. Besides golf, the park is great for parties of any size. There are several outdoor seating areas for all kinds of celebrations. And of course, let's not forget these cool batting cages designed for different skill levels. For many families, the Sherman Oaks Castle Park is a great alternative to a crowded and costly theme park. A round of golf is only $6.50 here, and parking is absolutely free. This park is go-to family entertainment for many.
I really enjoy coming here, playing at the golf course. My daughter loves it too, and we come a lot with our family, and we just love it.
Four-year-old Mildred explained why she likes coming here.
Because it's amazing.
If miniature golf isn't your thing, then maybe you'll like the Parks Arcade. There are enough games to suit anyone. We decided to have some fun and try our hand at this arcade racing game, and had a blast. And if you earn enough winning points, there are some really great gifts. Does that pizza look good? The staff members at the Parks Cafe are happy to serve you. They have anything from snacks to full catering. The hope is that more people will discover this hidden gem and find out just how brightly it truly shines.
Being LA, you know, you people want to go to like Hollywood, or they want to go to the beach, all these big places, Santa Monica. And so sometimes we may not look as big like that to a lot of the tourists, but to the locals, you know, this is a great place to come over and kind of get away from all of that.
The Sherman Oaks Castle Park makes visiting easy. It is open seven days a week and operates until about 11 on most nights.
It's a 30-year-old traveling piece of history. Its purpose used to be to divide, but it has since become a symbol of unity. Anna Marcos reports on the new installation at the historic Paseo Walkway, a wall against walls.
A piece of the past is going up at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, a 12-foot-high chunk of rock that reminds us that walls divide us. For almost 30 years, this section of wall did just that, separating East and West Germany. The Berlin Wall came down piece by piece in 1989 as protesters used pickaxes, chisels, and weapons to destroy it. Not many pieces are left, but this section, a part of the Wall Against Walls exhibit, has made it from Berlin to La Placita, a wall still relevant in today's times.
The fact that it is a wall resonates, I think, with the Latino community today.
This wall stood separating the city of Berlin for almost 30 years. Okay, separated families, separated people from freedom. And the same thing is happening at the border right now.
The three-ton piece of concrete got to LA by way of the White House. It was a present from Berlin citizens to the US to mark the 30th anniversary in November of the wall's destruction. And it was a comment on Donald Trump's own present-day border wall.
The message here from the people of Berlin is urging our president and our administration to build a world without walls. Okay, they know what it's like to be walled off.
Once we tried to deliver this wall and the letter with it to the White House, and it was rejected, we immediately realized that this is not for the president as much as it is for the American people. So what we started is we started to travel across the country. People were fascinated by it, and people were talking about it, and it created dialogue.
The wall monolith has reached the end of its journey and now stands near a sculpture of a wooden coyote, or coyote, at El Pueblo, an immigrant-inspired creation by a Mexican artist.
He's created nine of these coyotes that are spread throughout Mexico and guide migrants to their path to the border.
Immigrants whose families have been separated by the wall on our southern border will get a chance to have their names inscribed on the back of this piece of wall and become part of its legacy.
I don't think there should be like that division, because at the end we're all the same, and America was built in immigrants, so I think it's just important to remind us of that.
The Wall Against Walls exhibit will have a semi-permanent spot at El Pueblo Historical Monument. It will be here for at least six months.
We go from a 2.7-ton concrete slab of famous history to a lesser-known oral history. The group was nicknamed Six Triple Eight. They were the only all-black, all-female battalion overseas during World War II. And seeing that it's African-American Heritage Month, now seems like a great time to hear their stories and thank them for their service.
This presentation is going to focus on the 6,888th Central Postal Directory Battalion, the only all-African-American Women's Army Corps regiment to be deployed overseas during World War II. They were brought in to sort a huge backlog of mail in the millions of pieces. The Army frankly didn't know how to do it because the troops were moving across Europe so fast that they weren't able to keep up and deliver the mail from the soldiers' families.
When, you know, we give these presentations, a lot of people come up and, you know, didn't know, especially the younger folks, like, "We didn't know anything about these women." You know, we're inspired, you know, in a time when there was no civil rights for women and also for African-Americans. They were able to accomplish something great.
I learned about this subject maybe a couple decades ago, but not, I didn't know much. But with Alva Stevenson, she showed me some of the information and told me about her mother was in this unit. And it was, it was like, wow, you know, and knowing somebody who their parent was actually in, because you just don't hear this information.
Most important thing, I think, is just to recognize that there were African-American women who were actually serving their country. And I was disappointed that the history books never told their story, but at the same time, I'm so proud of them, and I'm proud to pass the story on.
In our feature this week, we welcome two accomplished team members from the USC Alzheimer's Disease Research Center. Saeda Pagan sat down with Dr. John Ringman and Dr. Jennifer Leo to discuss what to expect as you're aging.
According to the US Census Bureau, every day 10,000 Americans are turning 65 years of age. So the topic of mental aging is relevant to all of us. We recently sat down with two researchers to find out what we can do to delay the onset of mental decline.
With normal aging, there is a slowing down of neurons, the speed at which they can communicate. But also, overall, you tend to lose those cells with age. So there is a overall shrinkage of the brain that occurs, especially in more advanced age.
Now, a lot of us in the public are a little confused about the difference between dementia and Alzheimer's.
Dementia is just a general term that refers to a cognitive problem that affects your ability to do your everyday activities, like managing your money or remembering to take your medications. There's a lot of different causes of dementia, but the most common cause is something called Alzheimer's disease, which refers to specific disease which is caused by the buildup of two proteins in the brain. One protein is called amyloid and one protein is called tau. And over time, as these proteins accumulate, they injure nerve cells, and that causes symptoms, which usually start first with short-term memory loss, and over time progress to affect other parts of cognition and ultimately your ability to take care of yourself.
I think a lot of people are wondering, well, when is it going to start happening? So let's talk about the age. I know it can happen at a very early age. Doctor?
Just this morning, I was seeing a patient that started getting symptoms at age 23. It's luckily a very rare form of Alzheimer's disease.
Your risk for developing Alzheimer's disease goes up significantly after you hit about 80 or 85. So the risk for someone who's between 65 and 75 of developing Alzheimer's disease is about 1 in 250, but the risk of someone who's over 85 of developing Alzheimer's disease in the next year is about 1 in 13.
So that leads us to the question, what can we do to perhaps either prevent it or delay it?
We think that everything that's good for the heart is good for the brain as well. So we encourage everybody to exercise. It helps get your blood pumping and helps your brain get enough the blood that it needs. A generally healthy diet, in particular a Mediterranean-style diet, has evidence for preventing or slowing cognitive symptoms. And then taking care of the same risk factors that can cause heart disease. So if you have high blood pressure, making sure you're working with your primary care doctor to have it well-controlled. If you have diabetes, same thing, working with your primary care doctor to make sure it's really, really under good control.
Good luck with the wonderful research that you're doing.
A cookie convention puts on a sweet show. A Place Called Home puts on a music festival, and it's Music Video Night at the Annenberg. All this in Things to Do.
Don't miss the 2020 L.A. Cookie Convention and Sweet Show. This event is the biggest baking, pastry, and sweets convention on the West Coast. Indulge your love for all things sweet, salty, and savory in the world of baking and sweets. You'll even get to meet celebrity chefs. The 2020 L.A. Cookie Convention happens Saturday, February 29, beginning at 10:00 AM. For more information, visit their listing on Gold Star. Artists in Motion present the American Youth Symphony Festival. Together in conjunction with A Place Called Home, AIM is putting together on a fun, family, musical event. It's all in an effort to present South Central's underserved youth with a gift of music. The American Youth Symphony Festival will take place Saturday, February 29. For more information, visit artistsinmotionla.org. Be sure to check out Hollywood Calling: Music Video Night featuring Quinn Wilson. This music video series was launched in conjunction with Mass Appeal to celebrate creatives through the lens of video. Now this groundbreaking series is coming to the Annenberg Space for Photography. Don't miss Hollywood Calling: Music Video Night, happening Saturday, February 29, beginning at 7:00 PM. To claim your free tickets, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Gual. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining. And a reminder that you can catch us online at LACityview.org. We're also available on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A.
Affairs at NBC Universal, and Joy Forbes, who is Chief of Global Real Estate, so all the good stuff that gets built at Universal Studios. Joy is out there with Hammer and Nails. My good friend Phil Recht, who many of you know, and then the President of your city's Commission on the Status of Women, Jackie Fila, have joined me today. Thank you again, as both Councilmen Rue and Blumenfeld noted. I'll be back. I'm merely transitioning, not leaving, and I'm sure we'll have many adventures together. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfeld. Mr. Rue, Mr. Blumenfeld, we have a member on the queue.
Okay.
We have several members on the queue. Mr. Price, followed by Mr. Oferro and Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Madam President. Steve, we're gonna miss you. You know, you have just been a real icon in our community. And full disclosure, Steve and I discovered late in life that we were classmates, that we were college classmates, and it's been a wonderful relationship since then. And a good thing about Steve, even when he can't be as generous as you want him to be, he always has a smile. And so keep up the good work, Steve. Thanks, man.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Oferro?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have to stand and acknowledge you, Steve. Back in 2013, when I was a new council member, I literally didn't know most of the power players in the city of Los Angeles. And I remember, I think it was my first week in office, CCA hosted like a luncheon on my behalf. I walked into the room with Jeannie, my Chief of Staff, and I literally didn't know anyone in the room. And I don't even know that you and I had met. Maybe we'd met in passing at one time or another. But what I learned very, very quickly over the years is that because of your winning personality and your approach to government relations and your knowledge of the job force and the industry that you have worked in and helped craft and helped shape, has really reaped dividends for the Los Angeles economy. And so all the organizations you're involved with in terms of job creation and economic growth and development, you really have brought so many benefits to Angelinos beyond what you may even realize. But it's your approach, your ability to navigate the system, to navigate the politics, and always present such a winning way in getting things done. And I think we can all learn a lot from that. I know I have, and I just really appreciate that. And I doubt you'll go very far. Maybe we'll even see more of you, because you enjoy people, you enjoy your work, and you're just really fun to be around. And so I appreciate that, and so thank you for all your years of contribution and helping a new council member back in the day learn a little bit more about what it was like in terms of the groups of people that I would interact with on a regular basis. You really helped me in that sense. Thank you, and congratulations.
Mr. Buscaino, followed by Mr. Sadio.
If you want to join the chorus here and recognize and honor Steve for his service to our city and NBC Universal, you've been an advocate for respective districts, even the toughest times during the expansion of Universal Studios. You were on the ground in the community, getting support and addressing concerns from the impact in neighborhoods. And when we talk about tourism, Steve, you have been an advocate and a champion for one of the leading industries in our city. And because of your work in the tourism industry, you were able to provide and create a number of jobs throughout our area. But the one thing that you've left to mark in the city of Los Angeles, colleagues, is crazy what a weather cam can do to your city. But when NBC4 first opened its new studios, we did a walk-through, and we shared the story oftentimes, and I went into the weather station area, and I saw these weather cams from throughout Southern California, the downtown L.A. cam, the beach cam at Venice Beach. I go, we need a San Pedro cam. And sure enough, with your efforts connecting us to Steve Carlson, the President of NBC4, we were able to mount one aboard the battleship Iowa. And when we watched that weather
We've all gotten to know him, and I know he's been a presence in all of our districts as well. He is someone who's been a huge supporter of my holiday seasons, providing toys and movie opportunities for children in the community. He's always there for the community, and he has been there with NBC. But he's also someone you know with many of his other titles and hats. He was Chair of the L.A. Chamber, and he did an amazing job there. Was Chair of the Economic Development Corporation. He's been a board member on numerous community organizations: L.A. Police Foundation, YMCA Board, VICA, Ralph Parsons Foundation. You look around L.A., and you see the presence of Steve. His generosity and compassion to make this world a better place has not been lost by those who know him and who have been inspired by him. Under his leadership as President of -- he was President of Public Counsel Law Center. He helped build it into the country's largest pro bono law firm. He helped build the staff of 50 dedicated individuals, a cadre of 10,000 volunteer attorneys, providing over $200 million worth of legal services to children, the elderly, low-income families, and nonprofit organizations. It would be really sad if he was just retiring and disappearing into the distance. But he is retiring, but he is going to be a presence. He's going to continue to be a presence here in Los Angeles through his board work and as a consultant, both to NBC and to many others. So while we are here today to celebrate his retirement and his years of amazing service to this community, the good news is we'll probably get to celebrate him again as he's doing more great things in our community. So it was with the utmost respect and honor that I'm proud to recognize Steve Nissen. And we've got a certificate, but David wants to say a few words as well, and I want to give it to David. David?
Thank you, Bob. And thank you for organizing this presentation. I really wanted to participate because while I have not known Steve as long as you have, Steve, as you all know, in this horseshoe, everybody knows who he is. And I think you forgot to mention CCA, California Endowment, California Community Foundation that he's also involved in. But basically, there's not an organization in L.A. that he hasn't been involved in. And of course, my district representing Universal Studios had the fortunate opportunity to work with them on numerous issues in the community when it comes to the Evolution Plan, when it comes to outreach. I mean, he is our go-to guy over there. But I actually know Steve more outside of NBC. All the work that he does, all the international development stuff that he does. I mean, he's the one person that no matter what event I go to, it doesn't matter where it is, what part of L.A., or the most obscure event, I always see Steve. I'm like, "Steve, what are you doing here?" So he has been that much representing not just NBC Universal, but his philanthropy and his work to help all Angelinos is unparalleled. And I'm just glad that while he might be retiring from NBC, he's not going anywhere. We won't let him. We're going to make sure that we put him to work. And a lot of people have a misconception when you retire, you think you have more time. I think you might have more time for a couple of months while we give you a break, but we're going to put you right back to work on even more organizations and more philanthropy, and this time at zero pay. But thank you so much, Steve, for all of the great work that you've done in Council District Four and the city of Los Angeles, of course, in the business sector, in filming. I mean, the list goes on and on. This is much deserved, but we look forward to continue working with you in a different capacity. Thank you, Steve.
Steve, you want to say a few words?
Very, very quickly. Thank you all. I consider you all friends in the deepest sense and wonderful public servants. This job for the last 12 years has been really the honor of a lifetime and a pleasure. And I've had a blessed career, but this has really been a great capstone. And part of that was the opportunity to work with members of the City Council and staff. I did want to take one second because life will go on at NBC Universal, and you will have terrific people to work with. So I just wanted to introduce both Kathy Banuelos, who's the Vice President of Government Affairs at NBC Universal, and Joy Forbes, who is Chief of Global Real Estate, so all the good stuff that gets built at Universal Studios. Joy is out there with Hammer and Nails. My good friend Phil Recht, who many of you know, and then the President of your city's Commission on the Status of Women, Jackie Phila, have joined me today. Thank you again, as both Councilmen Rue and Bloomingfield noted. I'll be back. I'm merely transitioning, not leaving, and I'm sure we'll have many adventures together. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Rue, Mr. Bloomingfield, we have a member on the queue. We have several members on the queue. Mr. Price, followed by Mr. Ofero and Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Madam President. Steve, we're going to miss you. You have just been a real icon in our community. And full disclosure, Steve and I discovered late in life that we were classmates, that we were college classmates, and it's been a wonderful relationship since then. And the good thing about Steve, even when he can't be as generous as you want him to be, he always has a smile. And so keep up the good work, Steve. Thanks, man.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Ofero?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have to stand and acknowledge you, Steve. Back in 2013, when I was a new council member, I literally didn't know most of the power players in the city of Los Angeles. And I remember, I think it was my first week in office, CCA hosted like a luncheon on my behalf. I walked into the room with Jeannie, my Chief of Staff, and I literally didn't know anyone in the room. And I don't even know that you and I had met. Maybe we'd met in passing at one time or another. But what I learned very, very quickly over the years is that because of your winning personality and your approach to government relations and your knowledge of the job force and the industry that you have worked in and helped craft and helped shape has really reaped dividends for the Los Angeles economy. And so all the organizations you're involved with in terms of job creation and economic growth and development, you really have brought so many benefits to Angelinos beyond what you may even realize. But it's your approach, your ability to navigate the system, to navigate the politics, and always present such a winning way in getting things done. And I think we can all learn a lot from that. I know I have, and I just really appreciate that. And I doubt you'll go very far. Maybe we'll even see more of you because you enjoy people, you enjoy your work, and you're just really fun to be around. And so I appreciate that, and so thank you for all your years of contribution and helping a new council member back in the day learn a little bit more about what it was like in terms of the groups of people that I would interact with on a regular basis. You really helped me in that sense. Thank you, and congratulations.
Mr. Buscaino, followed by Mr. Sadio.
If you want to join the chorus here and recognize and honor Steve for his service to our city. In NBC Universal, you've been an advocate for respective districts. Even the toughest times during the expansion of Universal Studios, you were on the ground in the community, getting support and addressing concerns from the impact in neighborhoods. And when we talk about tourism, Steve, you have been an advocate and a champion for one of the leading industries in our city. And because of your work in the tourism industry, you were able to provide and create a number of jobs throughout our area. But the one thing that you've left to mark in the city of Los Angeles, colleagues, is crazy what a weather cam can do to your city. But when NBC Four first opened its new studios, we did a walkthrough, and we share the story oftentimes. And I went into the weather station area, and I saw these weather cams from throughout Southern California, the downtown L.A. cam, the beach cam at Venice Beach. And I go, "We need a San Pedro cam." And sure enough, with your efforts connecting us to Steve Carlson, the President of NBC Four, we were able to mount one aboard the battleship Iowa. And when we watch that Weather Channel or during the Weather segment, we often see that weather cam on the battleship Iowa. You've left a mark in the city because of that weather cam, Steve. Thank you. But congratulations. We love you, and thank you for your service, not only to NBC, you, Universal, to the business community, and to all of our communities that we all represent. Thank you.
And I think the weather has gotten better since we mounted that cam.
Mr. Sadio, followed by Mr. Harris Dawson.
Only to echo my colleagues, Steve, you're a mensch. You're a great servant leader. You're one of the more progressive and thoughtful leaders of the business community. You are a person who, as Councilman Buscaino had said, you know, always with a smile, always positive. You're the most agreeable, you know, if there's a disagreement, you're the most agreeable person to work that out with. You are just part of the fabric of the leadership of the city. And I don't just mean elected leadership, obviously, but of the fabric of those who care and love this city, who are willing to work hard, to make commitment and sacrifice. All your travel, all your efforts are not easy things to do, and you're everywhere. So I can't thank you enough for your friendship. You're a really enjoyable person to solve problems with, and I just want to thank you. You've played a big role, obviously, in my career and been a friend for decades. And so I thank you because for many of our initiatives, you're always there first and without hesitation or pause. And so thank you for your friendship, and thank you for your leadership.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair members. I wish to associate myself with the comments of all my colleagues and especially Council Members Bloomingfield and Rue. I wanted to rise today to make as a part of the record of all the nice things that folks have said about you, something that I learned in the course of running for office and meeting you. I'm in a meeting of movie studio executives, and I'm talking about all the work I did at the Community Coalition and how we did the work to remove nuisance liquor stores and other nuisance businesses across South L.A., which really improves the quality of life. And at the end of it, Steve says, "Well, I can vouch for that because I was the attorney for Community Coalition," which I did not know at that time. And so ever since then, we've gotten to do good work together. You made sure Councilman Weezer and I authored a homeless bond that could pass and that you could support. And you see all the homeless units coming online because of that support. But your contribution to all parts of the city is what I want to call attention to, that the things you've done when the cameras aren't on, when there aren't a lot of super important people in the room, continue to ripple and make a difference for generations to come and for hundreds and thousands of people who will never know your name and never see your face. You made a difference in their quality of life, and so for that, we thank you.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, the main thing I wanted to say was to use some film puns, but Bob took all my films away, so I have nothing to say, except, Steve, you've been a good longtime friend. I think of all your different careers and pieces, I think I most admire your work at public counsel, which helps so many people. But I think there are very few people like you that have had such an impact in so many diverse places that it would almost be difficult to come up with a full list because you'd miss some things. I think your career in the future will be similar to that as well. I know now you get to pick and choose exactly what you want, and you can just do a little bit here and a little bit there of good as you really have your whole career. So I look forward to seeing the second stage of this. And I have to say, the only thing that surprised me was that you never ran for public office. Just so you know, it's never too late. So if you decide to run for something, I'd like to be your first endorser, whatever it is. But congratulations on a great career and looking forward to what we see next.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. Steve, there really is like nothing left to say that hasn't been said, but not standing up and saying something would have been conspicuous and rude. So let me first point out that Corretts would not be your first endorser because I just suggested that you move into his district and run for his seat. So I technically would be the first endorser. I want to thank you, as everybody did, for the incredible service you've done. I think the way I kind of think of you is that for so many organizations, you've been the quiet conscience of those organizations, steering them to a thoughtful and compassionate approach to stuff. And I also want to thank you, just on a personal note, a couple of years ago, my rather sheltered teenage nephew, who comes from a town of like 3,000 people in rural Massachusetts, was out for a visit and was really interested in seeing more of Los Angeles and seeing the job opportunities and the creative opportunities that might be ahead for him. And you arranged a really amazing tour for him, and it was really a very impactful, life-changing, perspective-creating experience for him, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Back to you, Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. Rue.
I think everything has been said, so let's give a big hand for Steve Nissen.
Let's go ahead and vote on reconsideration of item number two. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
That item is now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item number 10.
The amended motion for item number 10 has been posted and circulated and is before council.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that item as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Can I just move on to general public comment? If I call your name, please come up to the podium. Marcus Lovinggood. Joshua Goodson. Joshua, are you here?
Right here. Hi.
Sarkis Gregorian. Is he here? Go ahead, sir. You have one minute of general public comment.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, fellow council members, and happy Friday. My name is Marcus Lovinggood. I'm the Historic Core Business Director on the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council and the Chairman of Broadway West, a nonprofit tasked at activating our historic theaters in downtown Los Angeles. I'm here today to give testimony on behalf of a constituent of mine and yours who was assaulted a few nights ago while walking to Target. Joshua, who lives just a block from me on Sixth and Main Street, was struck by a homeless man, unprovoked, in the face, just for walking. The man easily got away because it took over two hours for law enforcement to respond. In the last two years since moving to downtown L.A., I've seen a man push a 14-year-old boy in front of an oncoming metro train. I've been attacked myself and now my friends, and soon I fear my family. This is unacceptable at all levels. The state of crime and safety in our downtown residents and businesses is at unprecedented, outrageous levels, and I implore the council, please direct as much attention as possible to our neighborhood, and please help us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Joshua, do you want to speak?
I mean, yeah. I guess just that people pay a lot of money to live in this city, so it's just a little bizarre that this stuff happens. I don't know. I feel generally pretty safe where I live, but it was just, it was a very strange moment to be attacked by someone for trying to walk around them, and then for police to tell me that they couldn't really do a lot. I mean, it could be any of you, and it could be your, I don't know, your children, your mom, I don't know. Could be hit in the face for existing. And it's a little messed up. I don't know. I didn't really have a lot prepared. I just wanted to come and say hello. Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, sir. I'm going to call a couple of more speakers. Mary Danesian. George Johnson. Arnold Sachs. Do you want to come on up, sir? You have one minute of general public comment.
Hello, councilmen and women. My name is Sarkis Gregorian, and I'm among the foremost hookah experts in the world. I live in Los Angeles, but used to own a hookah lounge in Pasadena for 13 years until Pasadena banned hookah bars. This destroyed me financially, and it's been a struggle since. Currently, I'm seeking work in the L.A. hookah scene. I know hookah better than anyone, and I'm still struggling to find something, especially in this nature where hookah is being attacked regarding the flavored tobacco ban. I have a Facebook following of over 8,000 hookah lovers in California, to whom I provide reviews on hookah products and tobacco brands and accessories. I don't get paid for this. I do it purely because it's part of my culture, which I love and enjoy. It was easy for passing a ban in hookah bars. There was only a couple. However, Los Angeles has the highest concentration of people from a cultural background connected to hookah. As a result, it has probably the highest concentration of hookah-related businesses and aficionados in the country.
Thank you, sir.
And we need to work on that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
Some of you have already met me. My name is Mary Danasian, and I have been fighting to save my shop in the city since last year. I've been around for 12 years now and never had any violations. I own five-star hookah. It's an all-only hookah shop. I don't serve, I'm sorry, I don't sell any cigarettes, nothing menthol. I don't sell any vapes, just strictly hookah products. Today, if I sell my business, I can make a decent amount, but if the flavor ban passes, I will lose everything. So I'm begging you guys to please carve out hookah and give us an exemption for 21 and over shops. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm George Johnson. I manufacture a beautiful hookah called Regal Hookah as their premium hookah, as well as I'm a member of Hookah Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to just plead with you guys. I'm Japanese-American. I live with my nie-sey grandparents that I take care of. I provide for them. And my grandma grew up here in Little Tokyo in the 1920s and '30s, and we lost everything to government fear of a culture unknown. And I just couldn't imagine going to my grandparents and saying, "I can't help you with your bills or pay your property taxes like I do." They faced so much during that time period, and we see what happened in Germany to my friends who died because people don't understand immigrants, they don't understand culture, and they don't get it. And I'm just worried for all my friends and our culture and my business. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Arnold Sachs, followed by Lynn Moses, Patricia McAllister, and Antonio Ramirez.
Yes, thank you, Arnold Sachs. And thank you for granting us this one minute of time out of your busy day. I appreciate the hell out of this. I was going to say something about the presentation yesterday, Wednesday regarding Grant Fuhr, the female hockey player. Grant Fuhr played for the Edmonton Oilers, by the way, if nobody knows. And at that time, Wayne Gretzky was on that team, a hockey legend. You can go anywhere in America and say Wayne Gretzky, same place as Toby Bryant, and say there are legends in their sports. But legends in your sports is one thing. Doing something for the community is entirely something else. That's what you're elected for. You're elected to do something in the community that you represent. These people come for hookah, and they want hookah. That's fine. But it's a smoking hazard also, so you have to balance the two. I understand that. But that's your job.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
Do that job instead of presentations. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Lynn Moses. Hold on for just a second, Ms. McAllister. Mr. Moses is first. Lynn Moses, followed by Patricia McAllister, Antonio Ramirez, and Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning.
Ms. Martinez. The black community has designated November 8th as Homeless Day in Los Angeles in light of the first day, in light of Herb Wesson's election to the City Council, being that he is the king of homelessness in Los Angeles. And Ms. Martinez, Ms. Autry is here for you to apologize for if you want to take the opportunity. The black community has no leadership in a representative form of government. Marquise Dawson is selling our community. Officer, this is our response, the community's response. And why is Joanne Kim's name on the Secretary of State website listed as destination Crenshaw?
Thank you, sir.
That's for the FBI to be an FBI investigation coming up.
Patricia McAllister, followed by Antonio Ramirez, Yvonne Michelle Autry, and Armando Herman?
If it's the same person.
I also have number one, item number one.
That's already been voted? No, that was deferred, ma'am. That was not, that's not a, just general public comment.
Oh, okay. Here, I'd like to say that we have a conflict of, a very big conflict. We have a, we're a chartered city, and in the charter, I've read it, I have a copy, section 260 says that the controller should be an accountant and an auditor. Ron Galperin is a lawyer. Paul Corretts is, he's a history, has a degree in history, and he wants to be the controller. They know nothing about accounting. The reason I'm saying is because I made a lot of trips over to Galperin's office these last three years because he wasn't saying anything about the housing not being built. That's his job. And then he comes in and two, and six months ago and tells the people what's going on. You can't do it like that. Do not vote for Herb Wesson. Do not vote for Paul Corretts. Don't vote for Mark Ridley Thomas. Please don't vote for Kevin DeLeon, Monica or Monica Garcia. And please, don't vote for Harris Dawson. There's a write-in black candidate. She's a female. She's a write-in candidate. Please don't vote for Harris Dawson.
Okay, next speaker, Antonio Ramirez, followed by Yvonne Michelle Autry, Armando Herman, and Eric Previn.
This is a call to action. Don't vote for Herb Wesson for county supervisor, and don't vote for Jackie Lacy for district attorney. However, I do support the death penalty. Fry their asses. And for God's sakes, don't vote for Mark Ridley Thomas for city council. And look, it says that he has a public service DNA. His DNA is made of corruption, fraud, waste, and abuse. Massive chip on the shoulder and a two-bit hustler and a crook, never mind that he's a lousy parent. And it is my belief that they are all involved in criminal gang stalking, harassment, theft, urinating on my tent, and highly unethical political pandering pussies and cunt who failed miserably to provide public safety to all of us. They, along with the fucking elite satanic Zionist Jews who helped orchestrate this chronic high crimes, drugs, poverty, homelessness, Holocaust. Vote the Democrats out, and yes, fuck Israel. Stop the AIDS to Israel and give us toilets and showers.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramirez. Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you. Yvonne Michelle Autry, followed by Armando Herman, Eric Previn, and Wayne Spindler.
Okay, yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to ask for more time. And on the record, I'm urging that we do not make this any more of a sanctuary state. I believe that the priority for housing and jobs should be given to black people, Americans and veterans. It's, I think, a travesty of justice. There are those that can't speak English. I'm thinking primarily about Mexican, El Salvadoran, Hispanic people that have jobs, businesses, and are not citizens, and there are Americans, especially African-Americans living on Skid Row, and veterans. You should be ashamed of yourselves. The priority for jobs, housing, for health care, and also educational opportunities should be Americans, African-Americans. Again, we built this country. I think you think you can kill all of us, police brutality. And I'm thinking, and also, the Mexican mafia, Mala Sabatruche, you know, ella está en la calle. I speak-- I speak, read, and write Spanish. Prioritize. Close the borders until all Americans, especially African-Americans are housed with...
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Armando Herman, are you here? Armando Herman's not in the room. Eric Previn? Excuse me, Mr. Sachs, stop interrupting this meeting. I'm going to have you removed. Thank you. Mr. Eric Previn, followed by Wayne Spindler?
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and how deeply moving to have Mr. Nissen here from NBC Universal, and what a great career. He has given, he and many colleagues from NBC Universal, David Rue, over $8,000 to my count, and it is not alone to David Rue that he's given that money. And that's why we raise the question, is the public matching fund, Mr. Bonin, working? Because I just posted a chart. Actually, David Rue is taking $151,000 of public matching money, but are you kidding me? He's raised over $1 million, and this is the same thing. And Councilmember Martinez, are you going to accept matching funds and take it and slip your little ticket in on March 3rd at the last minute when it's too late to criticize you for doing it? Because you're not alone. And why did John Lee take $151,000? I mean, this is just appalling because, as we know, 76 people stood up to try to run for city council. Only 38 raised any money or got on the ballot, and many of those raised money but couldn't get on the ballot because, as you know, the city clerk's office, which is going to be investigated, and Election Code 105 does not work. It's a, we're not about blocking participation. We're about getting good candidates before candidates...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your time is up. Next speaker is Jabari Jemaine. Do you want to come on up, sir? Mr. Previn, your time is up. Mr. Previn, your time is up. Thank you very much. Mr. Jabari? Sergeants, can you please help Mr. Previn to his seat? Thank you. Followed by Reverend Fran Taylor? Reverend Fran Taylor, are you here? Want to come on up, ma'am, and speak after Jabari? Micah Roberts? And Harold Wheaton? Go ahead, Jabari.
My name is Jabari Jumani. I'm a citizen here in L.A. I'm an employee of L.A. City with the Fire Department of L.A. City and the director of the Afibah Center in South Los Angeles. As many of you all know, I've been here many times and talked about the retaliatory eviction notice we've been granted at the Afibah Center at the behest of our councilperson, Marquis Harris Dawson. We will continue to fight and remain relevant and in place in South L.A. Even though it seems as though the verbal backlash we get is that we are no longer being evicted, but they want to remove me as leadership, we're going to fight that as well, and we remain hopeful that we can all come together and reach an agreement that will bring this thing from getting bigger than it needs to be, and it certainly has gotten bigger than it needs to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon. My name is Reverend Fran Taylor, and I am a resident and stakeholder of the 8th District. The black community of the 8th District is in dire need of assistance from its councilman, Marquis Harris Dawson. Yet he doesn't seem to be interested in offering substantive and long-term solutions to many of our challenges. We are in dire need of more than a Band-Aid approach to cure our ills in the area of economic development, gentrification, and homelessness. With apparently no solutions coming from current 8th District office, the alternative I see is to stop bleeding and to present to you, Councilman Marquis Harris Dawson, this notice of intention and petition to recall Marquis Harris Dawson. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And next speaker? Go ahead.
Okay. This is from Marquis Harrison Dawson.
You just want to hand that over to the sergeants? They'll take it from you right now.
Thank you. I'm going to need to reclaim my time now because, you know...
Can you start his time again?
Excuse me?
We're starting your time again.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, Marquis, this is addressed to you. So, anyway, I am, I'm born in 1981, and the 8th District is the homestead for the gang of Six-O Crit. And there's many individuals who have gone to jail for life, who, there's many murders who have been committed within that conspiracy of the gang. I want to say that Jabari Jumani has opened up a center that was a haven for myself and a lot of young, other young people who were able to dodge that gang intervention. Jumani Jemaine, Jabari Jemaine, his, it's very necessary that he stays in leadership at that particular center because he is giving to the community what you guys say that you guys want to do within your communal situation. So, straight up, you know what I'm saying, District 8, 100.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Yes, I'm addressing the issue of the center. I'm also looking at you statues of representatives of corporate America, the banks. You keep the people divided. You keep black and brown people divided. You are the people that are the savers and sentries, including the police over here for the rich. We want that center to remain open. We want that center not to be gentrified. We want that center to be used by the people who are unfortunate and poor, and we want you to listen to that. I look at you. Most of you are on your cell phones texting nobody in particular, certainly not texting your owners, your bosses, the rich. Look at these people. Look at them. Look at Price over there. How you doing, Price? Do you have a personality? Do you, council members have personality? Homeless are all around your city hall chambers.
Thank you, sir.
I would stay up here a little longer and have the police remove me, but not today.
Thank you. Your time is up. Madam Clerk, that concludes, Madam Clerk, that concludes, excuse me, Madam Clerk, that concludes speakers on general public comment.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Can we all rise for adjourned motions? Mr. Price?
Yeah, I just wanted to, after neighbors and friends attend the... I want to invite neighbors and friends to come out...
That's the members of the public not to interrupt our meeting. Thank you.
After neighbors and friends celebrate Destination Crenshaw on Saturday, Saturday day and Saturday afternoon, I invite you to come out Saturday evening for the African Dance Challenge, a part of our Black History Month celebration at the California African-American Museum. It's going to be an exciting lineup of performers, and we invite folks to come out. The event starts about, the carpet's at 5:00, the event starts at 6:00, and neighbors are encouraged to come out and have fun. Thank you.
Any other announcements, members? Mr. Caretz?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to belatedly mention that this past Tuesday was World Spee Day. It's a good time to remind everyone that spee and neuter is the law in the city of Los Angeles and that it is relatively low compliance at this point, and it's the key way to avoid pet overpopulation and having to euthanize more animals in our shelters. So, it's the right thing to do for our city's animals, and just wanted to remind people of that.
Thank you, Mr. Caretz. Any other announcements, members? Can we all rise for adjourned motions? Mr. Cedillo?
Just as a brief notice, the appeals court right now blocked Donald Trump's efforts to violate international law and U.S. law by forcing immigrants who are applying and appealing their applications to stay in Mexico, which was a frustration of the whole purpose of people who are fleeing countries and fleeing violence, domestic abuse, to come here and to apply for, as a legal right, to apply for visas and permanent status. Donald Trump had arbitrarily imposed a new policy that was keeping people away from exercising their full rights. The appellate court just blocked them, and so it's just good news for all of us who live here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you for that update. Any other announcements, members? Any adjourned motions to my right? Any adjourned motions to my left? Seeing it, have a great week, and our meeting is adjourned.